Good morning, everyone. I'll call to order the Deshutes County Board of Commissioners meeting for Wednesday, October 2nd. We have a pretty long agenda today, but hopefully it goes smoothly. So we'll get started. Could you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda is citizen input. If anyone has any, there's blue forms over here. This would be for items that aren't on the agenda. And it looks like we've got one. So this is a three-minute for anyone to talk about whatever issues. So we have a request by Ron Bozell, AKA Rondo. Want to join us?
Thanks for asking.
Yep.
So please speak to the board during testimony. You were talking kind of to the audience last time. So this is input to the board and community.
Should I just?
Well, yeah, I mean, you're not speaking to the audience. You're speaking to the board when you're providing testimony.
Okay, I can look at them, though.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I'm just looking.
Sorry, I just broke it up. I just want to ask a quick question. Somebody asked me something this morning on Facebook. Asked me if I believe that we should regulate hemp in central Oregon, in Deshutes County specifically, as we have also regulated marijuana in the state and obviously in the county by saying that we have too much marijuana. Are we going to do that now? Are we going to lean toward that because of the effect on the local hay market? Thank you.
Either of you want to comment, or? Yes, I know hay is more expensive, and there's less of it, so yes.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Do either of you have anything you want to pull or ask questions about?
No. I move we accept our consent agenda for today, October 2nd.
And I'll second it.
Okay. And these are all things we've talked about previously at meetings. So Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. So move on to our action items, which are begin with number, item number eight. This is actually, this is from Community Justice. I think there's a variety of things we're going to talk about. We've got you lined up for four items in a row, I think, or three, no, four. So I think part of our goal today really is just to understand how these all fit together, understand what the budgets are, and maybe ask some specific questions on them. I know that, at least that's my interest is.
Well, in the big picture, and we've seen it, the Public Safety Coordinating Council, we've talked about it in work session a little bit, is this is the follow-on from the legislative session and the biennial plan, so a two-year kind of window that we're setting up for.
Very good. Ken Hales with the Community Justice Department with me, his analyst Trevor Stevens. You have four items before you. In response to your question, I'll give a little context. All four of these items relate to our business with the Department of Corrections. Two of the items relate to the Community Corrections Plan. That is, the plan that identifies how we'll spend state monies for the local offender population. It also includes how we spend local monies and their own revenues. Now, that's not, that's included in the plan so they get a full picture of all the monies going into the different services. The plan is specific to the Community Corrections Grant and Aid. Subsequent to adopting the plan, we'll have the intergovernmental agreement for the grant and aid grant. Now, the Community Corrections Grant and Aid is the big grant. It's the formula grant. We've been getting this grant since the mid-'90s. Scope of the grant has changed a couple times with passage of Senate Bill 1145 and then a passage of the possession of controlled substance felony to misdemeanors. So the scope of it's changed, but the relationship between us providing the local supervision and the state providing us grant and aid for that remains the same. That's the $11 million grant. The other grants really came after the Community Corrections Grant and Aid, and they were, you can describe them as enhancement grants. We don't deal with a separate population, but we have specified monies to provide targeted services and supervision to subsets of that bigger population. So, and I'll walk through these and ask for the approvals in a moment, but that includes the Measure 57, which targets supervision services for drug-addicted offenders. And it also includes the Family Sentencing Alternative Program. These are persons that would otherwise still be in the Community Corrections population, but it targets special resources, enough money for one PO plus treatment services for offenders with dependent children with the intent of keeping those children in the home and the offender out of prison. We work very closely with DHS and the DA on that one, so it's kind of a family preservation model. So these are all like layers of funding on top of the Community Corrections base grant.
So I'm looking, so when you went on to the Measure 57, I see that it's noted in the biennial budget of the Biennial Plan, but then we have a separate document, so we approve it separately? Is that basically what we do?
That's correct. Separate grant, and it has separate requirements. What they ask for in the plan is how you're going to spend, or the grant and aid money, but they also ask how you're going to spend the other monies in the context of the overall plan. So it still requires a separate approval because it's a separate IGA and a separate grant program, even though we talk about it in the same plan. Would you like me to go on?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, but of the four items, the first item before you item eight is the resolution to approve the Community Corrections Plan. And basically, this resolution is a demonstration that the county adopts this plan, and this will be the blueprint on how we'll spend these monies, the grant and aid money and the other state grant monies in the future. It's a blueprint, so they recognize there's some variation to that, but if there's major variation, we have to seek an amendment. So if I may, back up. I guess I really explained everything I had on here. This plan was approved yesterday at the Munich, the Public Safety Coordinating Council with the recommendation that the chair recommend to the board to adopt the plan and submit it to the state. I would ask that the commission adopt the plan and sign the resolution provided.
So let me ask you, what's the difference between the first of these items and the next three? Because the third one looks kind of redundant of the first one because it mentions the same 11 million. Is this the grant and this was the plan? Is that what basically? I mean, that's all right, I just try and understand.
It's just the way the state asked for it, and it is kind of redundant and complicated because we seem to be asking the same thing multiple times.
They asked for like the resolution to go into the plan, and then literally a separate grant agreement to actually approve the whole grant itself.
Yeah, okay.
Interesting.
So when, if we go back to the first one, the Biennial Plan, you have on page, it's our packet, page 34, there's a list of all the different sources of funding, and this is what you're talking about, that there's some, the big money is the grant and aid, but then there's these other supplementary, or you call them enhancement grants. Does this list everything that Community Justice gets, or is there more beyond this?
That is everything that we're using for community service, or for community supervision. That'll include supervision fees, interest on revenue that we have in the county line. That may include beginning networking cap that was unspent from prior years. That includes the county contribution plus the other grant contributions. Now, some of this is, I guess it's not, some of it is based on an estimate or a guesstimate of what we'll receive in a subsequent year, like the county allocation, and then it's based on what we know we'll get with the two-year grants. Does that?
Yeah, so you have County General Fund at $570,000, so that's what you're thinking you'll get with two separate budget years. And is that all the County General Fund that goes into Community Justice, or is there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And is, this is all adult side, isn't it? Or is there any juvenile? Okay.
So along those lines, Public Safety Coordinating Council yesterday, the two items, misdemeanor supervision and electronic monitoring are basically where those funds are allocated from the County General Fund. Electronic monitoring, we had, you know, done an update to the contract a month ago or so, acknowledging that the, it was an initial estimate, and it was kind of dialed in a little bit better, and that's $94,000. But then also misdemeanor supervision for sex offenders and domestic violence offenders, a part of Domestic Violence Deferred Sentencing Program. It was, the DA mentioned it, and the courts were acknowledged it. This is very valuable for, you know, the system being able to have those local investments. So that's $476,000. So those are kind of the two items that are allocated from General Fund. And as I say, it was very positive, everybody around the table yesterday, as you see, the sheriff is there, the DA, the court system, everybody acknowledged that's a very valuable investment for us.
Can I, your third page, you need to correct it. It says 2015 to 2017, the top heading, for the Community Corrections Biennial Plan? Biennial Plan?
That's their document, so we will definitely let them know about that.
Okay, yeah, I went, oh, my gosh. And then I had, noticing the number of offenders that you watch on a monthly average, domestic violence is like up to 250, and sex offenders is 250. So you don't have a total here, but those are the most, the two highest categories for our county. So I thought that was really kind of interesting that they were both at the high level. It's on page 23 of your document. And then I did have a question about your scoring, because I'm a new commissioner. On page 18, we're talking about the substance abuse treatment. One of the providers was given a 70. What is 100, is, do you want to get 100, or is a 70 excellent?
70 is really, really good for the, it's the correctional program checklist, and so 70 is actually an extremely high score. I mean, and on average, those providers score in the 40 and 50.
Right, I saw other ones that were lower, and I just was.
Yeah, it does go to 100, but I mean, I think the highest, the highest score I've ever seen is like an 80, so.
Okay, so 70 is within the range.
Yeah, we were very happy with that score for Fire Department Associates.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I just.
Your question related to domestic violence offenders and sex offenders?
Right, yes, that seemed like to be of the parolees, those 500 people, offenders, on a monthly basis. Isn't that your monthly average?
Right, this includes felony and misdemeanor offenders.
It does include misdemeanors, too? Okay.
So, yeah.
So the other percentage would be your general street crimes individuals, that most of the drug and property offenders, yeah.
Okay.
One of the things we've been, so we've had a few of the other departments in front of us recently and working through their, what they got from the legislature, and it seems, and we've had a lot of health, a lot of the Health Department, and it's interesting, some of the programs have gotten a big amount of money, more than they thought, some have gotten less than they thought. What have you seen in your departments? Is there any change really from expectations and then from last year or last biennial?
Our, we've, the funds that we have received, we have expected. We get a forecast from DOC. Our funding isn't as dynamic as you may see from the Health Department. There's not as many different streams of money. All of our money really comes from two sources, DOC and Criminal Justice Commission. And the DOC is pretty rote now. The grant and aid, the Measure 57 is formula-driven. The family sentencing alternative is just a fixed amount. I don't think that's changed for a while. The formula grants change as our numbers change, and they have a little inflation factor, but we're, we usually project that ahead of time. So going into our budget, we make an educated guess. The big question is when we go into our budget, it's when the state is talking about changing the funding. That is, adding a new grant or reductions. They come to the state agencies, and they say, give us a 5% cut, 10% cut, and then we have to kind of guess how much of those cuts we may be visited with or not. What's happened in the prior two legislative sessions, not this one, but the prior two, prior to that, is the governors asked for major cuts up front from the agencies, but the legislature has decided not to make cuts to the Community Corrections Grant. And that's, that's the one time it gets kind of uncertain for us.
And that, when you're saying previous legislature, so the '17 legislature and the '15 legislature?
Yes, correct.
The big ones? Because in the '17, I remember you were concerned that they, there was talk, the governor asked for a lot less, but you're saying the legislature went ahead and didn't do what the governor had asked, and so it ended up not being something you had to worry about. Okay.
So what happened then to the family drug court? Because their grant application was, I think, half of what they thought. I mean, they've met up, I noticed that you have a $20,000 carryover in one of these documents that we're looking at, but their funding came through a lot smaller than what they were expecting.
Yeah, they're, I'm not sure what the answer to that is. Their funding is not formula-based. It comes from the Criminal Justice Council, and they have a different rationale on how they decide who gets how much money. I don't know how they decide what amount goes to Deshutes or other counties. But it's not formula-based like ours is.
Okay, well, it just was, it was unfortunate.
And when you're saying formula, is that based on the number of people that live here, or the number of people you have in the criminal system?
It's more the latter. It's a very complicated funding system. And basically, to be real quick, the state looks like, looks at all the felony offenders in the state under supervision. They count them up, and they count how many are low, mediums, and highs. And there's a certain value, you know, like a daily rate for each. And then they add those together, plus the subsidy for housing, local control inmates, 12 months or less inmates, there's a value for that. That all goes into the formula, and then they come out with one big capitated rate, and then they decide which county has what percent of the overall pop, the total amount, and then that's what drives our budget. We typically run between 4.4 and 4.7% from biennial to biennial.
Of the total budget.
Of the total budget.
And that's, we're about five, I figure when I, we're about 5% of the population, so.
4.5, actually, I think. I calculated it the other day. We're like less than five, just a little bit.
I'll bet we're close to five, but anyway.
Yeah, I know.
But with the grant and aid, we're entitled to that money if we meet the conditions of the grant.
And then another just general concept, it seems to me that we're prosecuting less things, or we're trying to prosecute less things, you know, a lot of the low, low-level drug-related things, some of the, I mean, I don't actually know what the DA's come up with after what he said he was going to do, but is that going to result in reductions of funding? I mean, maybe there'll be less people on parole and probation, so there'll be less need for it, but will the end, the end result be, you'll be getting less money than you were used to in five years?
It's possible. A big driver on the number of persons under supervision is prosecutorial decision-making. In reference to what the DA said in a prior news conference, he was targeting persons that we wouldn't supervise anyway. So if ends up, if his practices change the way he prosecutes felony offenders, it could make a difference. Kind of go on history there.
Okay. Questions or thoughts?
Good discussions.
Okay, good.
I have a question about the community service. I noticed that you mentioned Habitat, Humane Society, and is the $69,000 that's granted for that, is that to have supervision when they're doing that? Or how do you, how does, where does the $69,000 get spent?
Funds that we expend on community service go toward the two community service supervisors and juvenile, because they also supervise adult crews. So basically, the adult budget is picking up some of that cost because half of their time is spent doing adult crews, and half of it's doing juvenile crews, even though they're supervised on the juvenile side of the department.
Okay, so that $69,000 is like a split?
Yeah.
That one? Okay.
Not that it's a big issue, but I was surprised how low that amount is, given how often I see the crews out doing stuff.
Yeah, well, sometimes they're juvie crews, sometimes they're adult crews, all wear the same vest, so.
So this is just the adult side of it?
Yeah, it's just a, for a while, juvie did it without any compensation, and we thought it was better to pick up some of it.
Put it in the plan.
Yeah.
Other questions? Commissioner Dare?
On the first one, I think, these are my questions. I was just, I was just wondering, this actually was dated, what is it, July 1st? But we're not, we're just getting it now October 2nd? Is that standard behavior?
That's not uncommon. What they'll do is they'll give us a quarters payment based on the prior year, and then when we get all the details worked out, they'll adjust the subsequent payments so the number comes out right.
Okay.
But the problem always is, we don't find out what we get from the legislature until so late in the session, there's no way to get everything done before the beginning of the fiscal year.
I just, looking at it, they're only spending, what, the domestic violence treatment is only $30,000, and if we have, you know, a significant number of people that are domestic violators, it seems like that number should be higher. I mean, when you look at where our issues are.
Well, many of the violators pay for their own treatment. This is a subsidy we use for certain violators that are into juvenile.
Yeah, historically, that population actually is, a lot, a large percentage of them are self-pay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Trevor. No.
What about on the other, so that's the first packet. Any questions on the?
Are we going to do all of them at the same?
Yeah, eight, nine, and 10. Well, I was going to, just because they're all kind of connected, unless you want to do them separately.
Um, okay.
Talk about them in a row here.
On the second one, the document 2019-628, so the date came from the state then with the wrong date? It says Deshutes, it's on the second page, Deshutes County Document Summary, and I'm assuming that Denise Sittler, Sittler filled it out? So it has, the original date is incorrect for the year?
I'll make a note of that and make that change.
Okay, I mean, I just was like, you know, if anybody.
2019?
Yeah, 2019. I was like, okay, that one was, okay, so this is Measure 57 for drug trafficking.
Well, my observation would be, I mean, these documents have been proposed, reviewed, Public Safety Coordinating Council, and now they're scheduled for us. So I mean, that may be the beginning date of when this document was put together. So I don't know that it's wrong, it's just.
No, it's the wrong year. It's 2019.
Oh, for the.
It's a transposition.
Oh, yeah. I wasn't, I was looking at August 8th. That wasn't, yeah, see in the year.
Yeah, it's just, it's just technical, but don't you think it's critical that it should be done? Yes.
Hundred years off.
Yes, so, I mean, we haven't gotten there yet.
So Measure 57 was the, what was, what did that do again?
It's the funds to focus on drug addicted, or drug and alcohol addicted offenders. I can't remember which session it came out of, but it was a public measure, and the measure talked about new sentencing practices for offenders with addictions, but also treatment funds, funds for intensive supervision for those offenders. So the measure was passed, the Department of Corrections instituted a grant program to allocate those funds to county community corrections programs.
And I think it starts in the court system, as in the definition of how a person is charged or, you know, the sentencing. And then this is the follow-on.
If they're charged with possession of controlled substance or some other drug-related crime, then they'd be eligible for these funds. And we tagged these expenses, right?
Yes, these are all project-coded, because they can only be spent on drug and property offenders. They cannot be spent on like any kind of DV crimes or anything like that. This money is specifically targeted for drug and property crimes.
So it says here that it was in 2008 that it was passed. It's been, so since then, they've funded this program that's been passed. And does this funding change much, or is it, does some, just?
The, it does change somewhat because it is formula-based, but the allocation has been fairly static, hasn't it?
Yeah, I think we saw 3% change or something, so.
Plus or minus?
I think it was minus 3%, but that's based on our, because we went down from like 4.37 to 4.3, based on how they break it up. So their percentages changed on how they allocated to us, so I don't really know if it was a decrease because our population decreased a little bit, so. But it was like a 3% decrease, if you look over that, so.
This, you know, as we've become more of a recre, well, we've definitely become a recreational alcohol place with the beer industry, et cetera, now there're actually quite a few distilleries here, and then with the growing marijuana population, has there been any change in our population in ending up in the criminal system?
I haven't, at our end, we have not noticed any significant change in the number of offenders with drug and alcohol addictions.
Or actually being.
It may be because the ones we get are only the felony offenders, not the misdemeanor offenders, and maybe most of this traffic is with misdemeanor offenders.
Yeah, we've seen some, I can't remember where I saw the statistics, but the statistics of some things have gone up that are, they've become more of a party town. They were kind of consistent with what a party town, but I don't remember, I don't remember this, but, okay.
Trevor, do you know how many children were involved in the Family Sentencing Alternatives Program?
So all of those offenders have to at least have a child.
A minor child?
A minor child, that, I mean, so they, they may not have their, they may not have them in their custody, but they have to have a child to qualify for that program. So everyone in that program would have had, I mean, depending on how many children they had, so I don't know the exact number, but I can get that for you if you'd like.
Okay, because it's, you know, because Oregon has as many children in foster care as the state of New Jersey that has 9 million people, and we have 4.1, so I just was wondering, okay, is this like a significant possibility for children, you know, staying with a parent? And I would think that there would be a lot of intensity surrounding.
It's a very intense program. I mean, the PO meets with them twice a month, they have like daily parenting logs, parenting plans, they're connected with that DHS worker. We pay for parenting classes through the Family Resource Center, there's a contract with them, so it's a very intense program, and to qualify for it, I mean, there's a lot of scrutiny for that individual before they're, they can make it into that program, so.
So Commissioner Dare, you're talking about this, I'll call it the fourth item, the IGA for the Family Sentencing Alternatives.
Right, that one, because the performance goals are really important, and I just was wondering, what is the impact?
You're saying we have twice as many?
Children, we have as many children in foster care as the state of New Jersey.
Four million.
We have 4.1 million, and New Jersey has 9 million, and we have as. We have four point one million, and New Jersey has nine million, and we have as many children in foster care. So it's like, why is that, and how do we, you know, make a difference? So that, that, you know, it just, it seems overwhelming. And then, of course, you know, some of the children were sent out of state and, you know, the foster children. So it's a real, it's a really, um, a big issue that I know the state's working on.
Yeah. This is a pilot program, so we're one of the test counties for it.
Do you know what other counties have?
Jackson County is part of it, Multnomah, Washington, and was it Marion, maybe the other one? I can't remember. I think so. I think it's Marion, the other one, yeah.
So that's great, that we get to be a pilot here. No, I mean, you know.
So I guess I, unless there's other questions, entertain a motion. Um, or we can do them one by one, I guess.
One by one?
Yeah, starting out with, um, item, package, item eight, which is resolution number two thousand nineteen dash zero three eight.
So yeah, I'll move approval, board signature of resolution number two thousand nineteen zero thirty-eight. The Deschutes County Community Corrections Plan for the Department of Corrections Grant and Aid Funding.
I'll second it.
Further discussion? Thanks for getting that in front of us and explaining some of this to us that we don't necessarily know, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Uh, the second item is, um, item two thou- two thousand nineteen dash six two eight.
Um, I move chair signature of document number two zero one nine dash six two eight, the IGA for services for drug-addicted offenders, uh, measure fifty-seven.
And I'll second it.
Any further questions? Any comments? Uh, Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Third one is the number two thousand nineteen dash six two nine.
So this is, I'll, I'll move signature and board approval of document number two thousand nineteen six twenty-nine, department, uh, State Department of Corrections IGA for the grant in aid funding.
I'll second it.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Fourth one is two thousand nineteen dash six thirty.
Um, I move chair signature of document number two zero one nine dash six three zero, IGA for Family Sentencing Alternatives Program.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you, thanks for the time and explanations. Good luck.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Trevor.
All right, so we'll move on to item number twelve, which is, um, the board's signature of document number two thousand nineteen seven twenty-six. Amendment to the Oregon Health Authority Agreement. And grace is here. That's what it says. So, Tom, welcome.
Hi, I'm Tom Kuhn, Community Health Manager at Deschutes County Health Services. And I am here today to recommend the signature of the Second Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for the Delivery of Public Health Programs. Hillary presented to you on the complete intergovernmental agreement this summer. And this is just the Second Amendment, which we can get up to ten amendments in any given fiscal year on the original contract. And this covers fiscal years twenty and twenty-one. So we're kind of at the beginning of this biennial agreement with the state. There are three program elements that have changes. I'll just quick run through those. Program element one, state support for public health. And this is what supports our communicable disease efforts in the county primarily. And, uh, with all these changes in these program elements, uh, one of the common themes is they were, uh, working on their funding amounts and funding formulas. And so they gave us, uh, an initial funding to start, and then now they're coming back with the remainder of the funding or the partial funding. So with the, um, P.O. one, we were funded July through September. And now we receive the remaining balance for the rest of the fiscal year. And so that's pretty much, um, all that's going on with that one. Program element thirteen, tobacco prevention and ed-
Did we get to there?
Yeah, sure.
So is that what you expected, the ones seventy-three?
Yes, yes, because we, our initial balance was approximately a quarter of the total amount, so. So maybe we got just a little bit more. No, no, not with that one. Uh, Tobacco Prevention Education Program that supports our tobacco prevention work. Uh, we were, same thing, funded July through September. The state has been, uh, working on adjusting their funding formula. They didn't have it figured out by July first, so they gave us bridge funding for July through September. And they still hadn't had it totally figured out, so then they extended the bridge funding for October and November, which is, uh, what we see here, the, uh-
Twenty-two thousand?
Twenty-two thousand. That takes us, uh, through November. And then we are hoping to find out in the next month what the funding amount would be December through June. And, um, as I said, same thing, they changed their funding formula and are trying to figure it out. And it's taken them a little longer to get that straightened out, um, uh, than, than they usually would. And a lot of that has to do with discussions with the CLO group, conference, local health officials. When they do funding formula changes, they often meet with CLO repeatedly and try to agree upon, uh, what makes most sense for the local health districts.
I think, I was at, um, the health meeting yesterday, and I believe that there are five people on ventilators, young people, right now with the vaping issue in the state of Oregon, so, um, I'm sure they are wondering which way they should go.
Yes, we're really, uh, shifting our, our focuses on e-cigarettes and vaping, uh, youth use and access, because that's becoming a real issue. And, uh, the state is also really reacting to that now. And, uh, yeah, we're, we're really hoping something can be done to reduce, uh, those rates, which are really going high. In our Regional Health Improvement Pro- Program also, that's going to be what you and I worked on together. Uh, that's going to be a, uh, top metric for substance use and substance and alcohol, uh, use prevention, that we would reduce the, uh, rate of e-cigarettes and vaping amongst youth, so.
So, so is that the direction we're gonna go, is we're gonna try to reduce the vaping and the e-cigarettes?
Yeah.
Are we back to regular cigarettes are better than?
Well-
They don't kill you immediately.
What, what we've seen with the data is that while the rates of e-cigarettes and vaping are going up, the rates of youth tobacco use are going down. But then the interesting fact is, um, adolescents who use e-cigarettes or vape are more likely to smoke as adults, is what the data is showing. So even though you're using cigarettes less now, if they use e-cigarettes and vaping, they're, yeah, then they convert to cigarettes when they become older. So that's what the data is starting to show. So it's kind of a confounding problem. And then now we're having deaths in, like you said, hos- hospital emissions. And, you know, we don't know what's being put into those devices. And marijuana, of course, so.
THC.
Yes, any-
Especially with kids, I mean, I think they put everything in these, in-
Yeah, and it's not regulated, so.
It's become a cool thing. I mean, we're, I think more cool than cigarettes were when we were young. I mean, I don't know if it's cool, cigarettes were cool to some extent, but this has become, because it's almost because it's a device, it's become cool or something, I don't know.
Yeah, like they can, a flash drive, they have things that look like that, or, you know, just every day a pen.
Silas, yes.
Yeah, and you can be sitting in, you know, the back of the classroom and using that. The teacher might not even notice and, you know.
They have it into, designed into their clothes. I mean, this was a couple of years ago, I went to a seminar with Claire Alliance, and they were showing everything. And I was like amazed. And it's only gotten worse.
Yes.
So one question to-
Yeah, sure.
Prevention and education. Are, is there a specific expectation or line item for the retail licensing program? And I know this just keeps getting kicked around year after year.
Yeah.
But my question is, is, does the state call that out specifically as a effort that they're funding that they expect to see, you know?
Yes, yes, that's one of the several, uh, big aims that the state has. Protecting the Clean Indoor Air Act, which is, um, uh, focused on indoor tobacco use as well as outdoor. And, you know, trying to protect employees at restaurants in addition to the patrons. Tobacco-free government properties, um, we worked on that, um, gosh, I think about six years ago. And we were able to have, uh, Deschutes County properties go tobacco-free. And also working with like the library and the community college and, um, you know, just continuing those efforts here in Bend and throughout the cities of Deschutes County. And Tobacco Retail Licensor, which we've been working on as part of the state work plan since about two thousand sixteen. So that's something they are really trying to push that we work on at a local level to assess if it's feasible or what makes the most sense to implement it. That's something we're going to be coming back and revisiting with the commissioners, um, here in the next month or so. Give you an update of where our efforts are at and ask for any guidance or thoughts upon those efforts.
But I'm just acknowledging that, you know, we've, we haven't given clear guidance as a board, and I, I haven't been supportive of a license at that retail location. Just the business sense of it.
Sure.
But, you know, uh, early, uh, diversion and, you know, development folks, uh, the long-term effects of smoking and tobacco. I mean, there's, there's a lot to support there, but then there's just this licensing thing has been something that, as I say, I haven't been supportive of. So we're accepting dollars from the state, which is a line item saying you shall try, or you'll, you know, get the word out about licensing. So we're just kind of a, little bit of a conflict there.
Yes.
And, uh, you know, we haven't really voted on that or anything. I'm just speaking as one commissioner.
Yeah, sure.
We have talked about it though some, and I've had this issue that you guys-
Yeah, so I'm acknowledging that if the state has a line item saying you shall do this, and we're receiving monies for that, this may be the point where we think, huh.
Where, so is that in this budget as we look at?
Yeah, it, it's, it's in, uh, the funding, like I said, for the last three years, it's been in there. It's in the, the overall intergovernmental agreement. It's, uh, for the funding, um, that we're gonna do the rest of this year. And it's for us to work on that, to assess if that's feasible. Maybe it's not feasible at the county level, maybe individual cities want to go that route, and that's what we're trying to figure out at this time.
Would be good if you came to-
Yes.
We got a meeting in the next month, because I, it's, the only person that ever talked to me about it seriously was Nathan Bodie, who was a city councillor. But, you know, I, I share this concern that-
Well, and we put you in a spot, you know, because you just mentioned the word, is it feasible? Heck, yeah, it's feasible. I mean, if we all said we're gonna do this and we're gonna give, you know, more staff, more authority and a, you know, authority to go write somebody up for not having this, that, that's the political will that I don't think is there, is just, I'm acknowledging.
Okay.
Sure. Okay. Any other questions about this?
The first, uh, did you speak on the pers-
No, that's the last one, uh, program element twenty-seven. And this promotes the Oregon Prescription Drug Monitoring Program. As we know, um, over-prescribing by pharmacists and providers has been a big issue in, uh, recent years. And this program works to educate those providers and pharmacists about the appropriate levels of prescriptions, uh, to be giving people. I myself, like, two years ago, had minor knee surgery, and they gave me thirty Percocets. And, you know, I took it at the time, now I'm thinking about it, and then I got home and I was like, what am I gonna do with this? So.
Did you go back and talk to them?
The first few were important, but after that, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, no, I, I-
You really need to talk to your doctor about it.
Yeah.
Honestly and truly, because doctors should not be over-prescribing those kind of, um, I know somebody that was given like forty, um, OxyContin, you know, for nothing.
That's an issue.
Well, that's the problem. But no, I mean, it's, you know, it's coming from a doctor and, um, as much publicity as opioid overdoses and everything, and the value and the selling appeals, that it really needs to be changed.
Yeah.
So that was, what, three years ago?
Hmm, yeah.
So maybe they weren't quite aware.
Yeah, no, I think that the tension is just the last couple of years.
Yeah, three years ago was barely an issue.
Yeah. It's really-
Well, I, I knew it in the nineties, though, because I knew someone that was given all these OxyContin, and I knew it was a really, um, it was so unnecessary. Um, and, you know, people will, some people will ask for more, because they know what's going on.
Or they can sell them.
Yeah, they sell them.
There's quite a business in that, yeah.
Yes, for sure.
Somebody, or people steal them too, so. Okay, uh, any other questions, or can we get a motion this?
I just wondered, is that, um, is that funding what you expected then?
Uh, yes, it's, it's what we expected up to this.
It's right online.
Yeah.
Here, I'll follow on.
Yeah.
In the first quarter after the legislative session.
Well, because the one isn't finished.
Yeah, there's, the tobacco one's the one that hasn't been finished yet, the funding. But the, the other two are the full funding amounts for the fiscal year. But then again, there are times when the state comes up with more money with one month or two months left in the year that they, uh, give out to locals too, so that does happen.
Okay, all right. So I move, um, we have board signature of document number two zero one nine seven two six. Amendment to Oregon's Health Authority Agreement.
And I'll second it.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
All right, we'll have, uh, we're right on schedule. We'll have consideration of board signature document number two thousand nineteen six nine nine, and the denial of the Neemzow Marijuana Production on Sterling Drive.
Good morning for the record.
Izzy's back.
My name's Izzy Liu, Associate Planner with the Deschutes County Planning Division. So like Commissioner, you said, this is the final version of the denial of the marijuana production facility at six zero one four eight Sterling Drive.
Good. So I, I thought you did a good job, I don't know how many, who all worked on this, but of kind of broadening out the, the, um, discussion of the Youth Activity Center. You come up with the words. I had a couple, uh, thoughts. I don't know if I want to change anything, I'm just bringing it up. It's hyper, kind of technical, but this, if this decision ends up influencing other decision, decisions, it may be worth considering. So that's my thought. Either of you have opening thoughts, or do you want to get right into the wording, or?
No, I, I, I like your changes. I thought they were-
Incorporate the, the ma- the volume of activity as well as the, the regularity of use, so, um... I, in the top, so I'll go right to the wording in page five on the third line down. Scheduled swim time for a large volume of children. I just wondered if that should be significant number of chi- volume of children. Large, I'm not sure what large means. And I don't want that to be the new test by the Luber, whoever, is, is something large, because I don't know whether six is large or sixteen.
Do you have the new one? Because mine doesn't say that.
No, large.
Oh, the third, oh, large.
Large volume. So I just wondered if it should be, and I'm just bringing this up as, um, and if either of you have thoughts on that, large versus significant? If you like large, it's fine with me, but.
Significant, they could think they're large children, so maybe changing it to significant would make more sense.
Absolutely.
So down below in the third paragraph then, where, where we've got the list of different activities. Interpret these facilities and activities located specifically at the ranch to constitute YACs. I don't know if I really think each one of those is a YAC. To me, I think collectively, they make the place a YAC. So I don't know, that's just a thought I have, so, um, but I, we really haven't talked about it. Do you feel like each one of those is a YAC? Or do you think it's the collective, the fact that they're all there makes?
Well, I think listing what to, for nine of them, I think it's significant, because there are, um, you know, there are children involved in that whole area. So to me, I thought it was, um, it demonstrates what's really happening, and it, it's very clear.
You see, what I'm asking is, the way it's worded now, it interprets these facilities and activities located specifically at the ranch to constitute YACs. So do you think each one of those is a YAC? Or if, assuming this might get appealed, could it be, could it be struck down because? They'll say, well, the picnic area, it doesn't have enough evidence, so that is no, I don't know the relevance. I'm just saying, when I thought about it, I didn't get to the end of the weeds and decide which were and which weren't. I just said, boy, there's a lot of youth activities that are regular, take, have a lot of people. And I, so I just wondered, should I say, at the ranch to collectively constitute a YAC or something? But I don't know your thoughts on this, so that's what I'm asking. Do you think everything's a YAC?
So the activity is listed under there, it's, the way that this is written, it seems like it's talking, so it says especially at the ranch. So it's these activities that were identified, um, as being a part of the Sundance Meadows Ranch. And these special activities are what were considered the Youth Activity Center.
Well, I, I agree with that, but is it because they collectively agree? I mean, what if there was only a picnic area? Would that be a YAC? Or if there was only a- Or if there was only a BMX track? Because if I was attacking this on appeal, I'd be raising those issues, I'd be saying, well, there's no evidence of this, 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 and this, and try to whittle it down, but.
David?
Well, I think the language impliedly indicates that it's collective, but I think that would be a great clarification to expressly state that, and see Izzy nodding her head, so I think she's already captured that.
You're all right with that, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, to collectively constitute a YAC, yeah.
So, scenario, we live in a rural property in Deschutes County next to an EFU parcel, and I think of my backyard, bocce ball court, horseshoes, picnic area, remote control track, you know, kids on bicycles, ATV riding around the property, horse barn and cor, I mean, everything on here is exactly what I have done on my property, and we're next to an EFU parcel, so that's why I see it differently here, I just, I don't see the fact, a private property with activities is different than a certified place where you drop off your child for the day, so I'm just clarifying why I would see it differently. And as I say, everything on this list, this, we do, we don't have a fishing pond, but everything else we have done on our property.
You have a golf course?
Uh, we live next to one.
Well, you know, the only difference I see is that you don't advertise that the DeBonne Clay Ranch.
Well, but this is a, this is a ranch which is fractional or membership ownership for somebody to bring a family to do activity, which is like private property, and it's still not a certified daycare or boys and girls club, so I understand, that's the, that's the distinction, so, and it reads that I don't support the words in this.
Yeah. Okay, so you make that change, and then the only, the third one I had was down in the next paragraph, I just was gonna add, Commissioner Anderson noted that the marijuana advisory committee discussed licensed youth activity centers, but the word license was omitted from the Deschutes County Code, therefore, the term was left undefined, and I added, and licensed is not required, because if they'd, if they'd wanted license to be required, they could have put it in because they considered it, so that's a small change, are you okay with that?
Yes, that's your quote.
So?
It's your quote.
It's your quote, so you may, you may clarify your quote.
Okay.
Isn't it?
Yeah, well, I guess it is, I don't know if I said that then, but I'm saying it now, I guess, I might have said it then. Okay, well, those, I think, otherwise it's, the form's good, and I'd be ready to sign it, so.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Ready to sign it also?
Yes, I'm ready to sign.
So, what's our deadline?
It's October 11th, but these seem like minor edits that I can do today, and.
Yeah, if you can bring it back, we're gonna meet now, and we may, we're gonna probably meet this afternoon too, if you want to bring it back for signature.
Yeah, absolutely.
The applicant and the appellant probably would like to put this to rest, so, okay.
So perhaps we get a motion to approve that with those changes?
Okay.
I move, we approve the changes made on the document for, let's see, where's the number?
Document number 2019.
Yes, 2019-699, the denial of the Neemzow, so marijuana production at 60148 Sterling Drive Bend.
I'll second that, and Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
I vote yes, acknowledging the documents is my opposition.
And Chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thanks for getting that done.
Absolutely.
See you this afternoon.
Okay, item number 14 is an overview of the Bend Airport and FAA master planning process, so we've got some help, Nick's gonna lead this, and you've got help, right?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the Glee Act, Deschutes County Community Development Director, I, I not only have help, I actually have the presenters, so Carolyn Egan, the City of Bend's Economic Development Director, and I'm not sure if Gary Judd, the Airport Director, will join her, but if so, I would invite you both up, they have a presentation, I'm, we didn't have a chance to coordinate this morning before, so I'll load that up as, as they come up, and they'll begin to provide an overview. Peter Russell, our Senior Transportation Planner, and I are here to answer any questions that you may have of county staff, based on what you learned in the overview, so I'll be happy to turn it over to Carolyn and Gary, and we'll go from there.
It was great, I saw Gary on TV this morning, yes, I was like, how appropriate is that?
We did, I wish.
Third busiest.
Time that.
Yeah, I know, third busiest airport in the state.
Was he there on this?
Yes, uh-huh. My.
Yeah.
Commissioner, I'll just add to Nick's introduction on this, the session this morning is really a result of a meeting that Nick and I had with Carolyn and Eric King, the City Manager, to, in an attempt to sort of frame for you all the path that's in front of us for examining the Bend Airport Master Plan, Bend Airport generally, to kind of set the context, there's several tasks before you in terms of, of reviewing the, the plan itself and, and some questions for you along the line, but we thought it would be good, because we've talked about this sort of piecemeal over the last six months, came up briefly at the joint meeting we had with Bend Council some time ago, we thought it would be useful to sort of frame the whole thing, so you have an understanding of what the expectations are, what the tasks are, and not that we do that all today, but, but today's session would be sort of a timeline on, you know, what's in front of you, and the, the milestone events that, that go along with the review of the Bend Airport, so, you know, the first of several sessions today, but again, with the idea of education and background as we move forward.
And I'll acknowledge real quick, I mean, I, you know, I was invited to join some of the committee work here, and then we're in that spot where we're not sure if it's a quasi-judicial application coming to us or a legislative matter, we have history with residents in the neighborhoods surrounding, you know, being impacted and bringing those issues to our attention, I really like the economic development activity and the, you know, the industry and the technology of it, so I'm, yeah, we're kind of in the middle of this, so that, just trying to work that out a little bit.
Great, well, I'm Carolyn Egan, I serve as the City's Economic Development Director, and I'm just thrilled to be here today with Gary Judd, we actually only have Gary for several more weeks, he has officially announced his retirement, so I'm scared to death, but also really eager at the opportunity to learn more about what's going on at the airport and really share with you what goes on out there, why aviation is important, and how this airport really fits into an overall transportation system. I've jokingly said to the group of commissioners before was, Deschutes County has significant aviation assets, and really getting you to understand where the Bend Municipal Airport fits in that asset, so we wanted to, we really took a step back almost, Tom, from what you were describing today, is we talked about airports in general, why aviation and airports are important, what's gone on at the Bend Municipal Airport over the last 20 years, and then how that is leading into the master planning process that we are involved in. We've got a bunch of time for you to ask us questions, so stop, I don't understand that term, tell me what that means, that's really what this discussion is meant today, if we can't answer it, we will come back and talk about that more with you, we don't want to assume any knowledge on your part, having been, I came as economic development director, I knew we had an airport, in four years, it's taken me just barely to learn what we're gonna present today, so I don't expect you to understand that all in a 20-minute presentation.
That's like us trying to understand our health department.
Yeah, and, and the sheriff, and planning, and, yeah.
Oh, those are easy, the health departments.
So, so please, I mean, even from the first slide, stop us and ask us questions, and then, really wanted to finish the presentation up with roles and responsibilities, I think the role of the county, the role of the city, the role of the Federal Aviation Administration, the role of the Oregon Department of Aviation, can be complicated and a little bit difficult to navigate, and we haven't figured it all out yet, so that's what we're here to do today. So again, why airports are important, what is the Bend Municipal Airport, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding of where this urban GA airport, you have a significant urban asset in the middle of a very rural county, and that just, just saying that sentence creates conflict, and so, talking about what the airport is, and then going through roles, and then making sure we have time for discussion.
Okay, first off too, on the subject of my retirement, Carolyn, as you know, this is a very quick study, she just got back from the Oregon Airport Managers Association meeting, was able to, the FAA and the state, I think it's in good hands, I think that it'll, it's gonna continue on the trajectory that it's on, so I'm excited to see the future for it, and even more excited to see it from retirement, so, thank you. A little bit about the airport, as you can see in all of Oregon, there's 97 airports, there's six commercial service ones, seven of the airports are in central Oregon, four are in Deschutes County, and there's a multitude of local airstrips, and the significance of that is, is that the number of airports is what makes aviation work, if you have a very few airports, there's no place to go, you can't depart your community, you can't land in another community, you're just stranded, so in, the whole part of aviation is the ability to be mobile and to visit all those different small communities, so as a whole, the availability of airports in every single community is critical, that we have it.
Sisters is not on there?
Sisters is on there.
Yeah, Sisters is in there somewhere.
Of course it is. It's one of the four Deschutes County airports, for sure.
Yeah, we've got Redmond, Sun River, Sisters, Bend.
Yeah, I was wondering, maybe there was a different designation, so.
Those are probably all public airports.
They could have, yeah, they might have dropped them off there, because it is a privately-owned airport.
It's on our next.
Well, and that's, that's why I'm asking that question, is there a distinction between those two?
There, there can be, they're, they're like, Sun River is a public-use airport, but it's privately owned, Sun River is the same, excuse me, Sisters, and, and Sun River's the same way, there are airports that are private, and they have little emblems that you're not welcome here unless you're a member of our HOA or our residential group, but they still serve as emergency strips.
Yeah.
People can use them as someplace to land, so there is a difference on how they're funded, the airports too, in, there's a limited number in the state that are federally eligible for aid from the FAA, Sister oddly enough is eligible, but they won't give them any money, so, I'm quite forgot, but they're an AIP airport, Sisters is not, so there is a difference in those. Is there any questions about this slide or anything on it, or?
I think one thing that's really important, go ahead, you can still flip this slide, but even the Director of the Oregon Department of Aviation said, you know, you drive past that little airport in Oak Ridge, and it seems pretty insignificant, but if you're the pilot who just got over the Cascades and you've got instrument failure, that airport in Oak Ridge is really important to you at that minute, so it really is about a system of airports, and each of those airports, I think, as, as Commissioner DeBonne is highlighting, has a different part in the hierarchy, and that's really important, just, I mean, as we think of all of the decisions that we have to make as community leaders and elected officials, we help our citizens make decisions for their worst day that they haven't even contemplated, and that's one of the roles that airports play.
And on this next slide, too, we're talking about like emergency response, and there's, there's a couple things that kind of might, obviously the Cascadia event, and a lot of the entrance is focused on Redmond, as it well should be, it's got the bigger runways, but what we're going to see if that happens is everybody pictures, I think, everybody from the coast is gonna run over to this side, and I don't think so, you're gonna stay close to home and family and friends and do the best you can, but what happens is the onslaught of support, they have the media, you have the military, and it's gonna quickly overwhelm probably Redmond, Sisters, Bryanville, Bend, it's gonna be huge, and so those are the things that we want to be there, ready for them when they come, as much as we can be, so that's one of the aspects of it. The other part of emergency response is that in eastern Oregon particularly, and in other parts of the state, is we have AirLink and Liflight, and that connection with St. Charles, and my background was from John Day, and to live in those small communities out there where you're doing the, the agricultural and support industries that help keep the urban areas going, is, you really don't want to live there if it's four hours driving to a hospital and something happens to one of your kids, twice my children have actually rode on AirLink coming in, so that part is absolutely critical to the region as a whole, is that we have that, and for Bend particularly, St. Charles, that connection is obviously the revenue, the cost of the flights, it can be upwards of $20,000 for a flight coming in from John Day, but that access and the ability to get here is critical, so I think from that point of view, is, is from my personal, is that emergency ability to be there for other people is really important. The access too for the airport is, if you, some of these other charts will show is that the air, the airspace in the United States is basically highways in the sky, and you think about it in the terms of airlines, but it's true of everything that flies, and with GPS, it's becoming even more so that you can go point-to-point, you don't have to go up and get onto a navigation airway and fly a convoluted route from here to, say, Boise, you can just get in your airplane, punch your GPS, and go, but if you don't have an airport, you have no access to that system, all of those aircraft, all of that revenue being generated, all that transportation goes to some other community, you're, you basically do not have an off-ramp to the I-5 in the sky, so that access is incredibly important, and it goes both ways, we have people that live in Bend, and they regularly commute to San Francisco, it's four hours, I mean, I can't drive to Boise that quick, I don't think, at least I've probably been.
I shouldn't.
Yeah, there you go.
If you can, we don't want to hear about it.
Yeah, that's it, we don't want to know, yeah, I drive slow, so, but that is something that, that sometimes is missed, is what makes a community work, and one of the things that is hard to pinpoint, but I don't believe you'll find a successful community that does not have a successful airport, especially in the growth phases, it's really critical, and it does tend to draw people that are, tend to have more funds, they can invest, they can be in stuff, but the other part that I kind of want to point out is that it's not a, we call it, it's airport for private people, but what we mean is, it's a public-use airport for people that own private aircraft, and that doesn't mean that it's an exclusive club, it is much more accessible than, say, the Redmond Airport or Portland International, you can drive out to the airport, get in your own airplane, fly when you want, come back when you want, it's total freedom to come and go as you want, so it is totally a public-use airport, and I think that's one of the misnomers we run into, is, oh, it's just corporate jets, and, you know, disclosure, I, I own my own aircraft and I hop in it and go to John Day and visit the kids, it's great.
Makes it.
When the weather works.
Easier, I think one of the, two other points on access is, from an economic development director's standpoint, you'll hear, there's always this urban legend, maybe it's a rural legend, but how the city manager invested in a new sign on the highway coming into their town, and everybody was ready for this big Fortune 500 CEO to come into town, and then he flew in, and he got out of the airplane and said, you're not ready for me yet, and the city manager's almost in tears, like, we invested hundreds of thousands of dollars in our road infrastructure, but CEOs fly into your community, they don't drive into your community, and so, when you're thinking about access to your community for where you're gonna grow your employment base and a diversity of employers, you really are thinking about accessing airports, and in terms of the Bend Airport, that's really what we see. I think the other thing that we see is that, linking to emergency response, when we talk about needing runway extensions, or control towers, or repaving of runways, we're trying to accommodate larger planes for emergency access, so in the Cascadia event, or in the next fire event, what are the size planes that the air, the Forest Service is gonna need to land at the Bend Municipal Airport so that we can protect our wildlife, our wildfire areas, what are the safety, the medical evacuation flights that are gonna have to make it into the Bend Airport, and so, when we think about some of the concerns that neighbors have, you know, if you do a bigger runway, I'm gonna have more activity, or if you do a bigger runway, I'm gonna have bigger planes flying over my house, maybe, but largely, when you, when we get into roles and responsibilities, we're building those so that we can, we can prepare for our community on the worst day, and not necessarily just trying to generate a whole bunch of economic activity, so you're balancing those needs from a federal, from a federal viewpoint, as you're thinking about all these things going into airports, too.
And then, the next bullet point there is the employment, and I just got the, from the Employment Department yesterday sent me the statistics, there's 429 employees and just slightly shy of $23 million in payroll coming off the airport, that's direct primary dollars, and so that's running out, we'll get through some of the other slides too, but basically the impact that has in a regional level is around 174 million, is it secondary dollars that rolls through, so that kind of covers this slide, but I say the employment, and the employment, I think, is gonna jump pretty rapidly, Epic's about ready to go to certified aircraft production, and that's gonna make a big change.
What, when you say in employment, I'm assuming you're, all the businesses that surround?
Right, they're on the airport.
On the airport.
There's actually 16 businesses on the airport.
Are all of those dependent on being by the airport, or some of them there because they have a good hangar to work out of, or?
Some more than others, it's been an ongoing discussion, and kind of the litmus test is, you know, if they weren't where there's an airport and they had access to the runway, could they survive? And there's always, there's, are there, are companies that they outgrow it, they have an airplane, they have an office, and they keep growing, and pretty soon, they have more office workers than they do airplanes, but those companies, it's probably best that they transition, and sometimes that takes quite a long time, but the vast majority of them, if, without a runway, they would be out of business, so I think that's kind of the litmus test on it.
And that guidance changes from the FAA, so if sometimes we feel like, well, our ideal situation would be A, that we only have businesses on the airport that need access to a runway, the FAA may come in and say, well, and they describe more of a scenario of what Gary's just described, so we're always working between, we're serving probably three masters as we run this airport, and making sure we're in compliance with the federal rules that may change, and sometimes they go forward and come back, and then also dealing with all the other land use commitments that we've made to the airport, so, but ideally, as Gary's described, they are all different types of businesses in all different industries that need. different industries that need, that need access to a runway, or some sort of pad for helicopters, they don't all have to be fixed-wing aircraft.
And this next one, we, we had this put together, of where the flights originated in different spots across the country. And you can't really tell it on the slide, they're actually color-coded as to which ones had the most. But the overall picture is that pretty much everywhere in the United States, flights originate and come to and go from Bend back to those points. So, it really is a critical part of it, you can see the really big clusters is down San Francisco, Los Angeles, Seattle, Portland area, those are the areas that are getting the most traffic, but they come from just almost anywhere, and it makes a difference. And like I said, there's, there's not too much foreign traffic, but we even have a little bit of that, but they didn't show it on the chart, so.
These are where people are starting, where they're starting their flights into Bend.
Right, and they originate and then come in, come into the Bend Airport. Okay, this one, and I apologize, I cannot read from there, I don't have it in front of me.
This is the seven Central Oregon airports.
I'll just step up a little closer, so I can see it. You can see the traffic on it, is that we, we show about a hundred and forty thousand operations in Bend, and this, this numbers are a little bit old, but they're coming out of the most recent report from the Oregon Department of Aviation. And traffic-wise, you can look at Madras, Pryonville, Redmond, and the impact is different, like Redmond's showing forty, forty-one thousand, and they've actually increased that now, it's up closer, I think ninety-eight thousand operations, because they're also being impacted by the flight schools that we're hitting. But the point being is that they move a lot more people, we move a lot more aircraft, but it's growing and it's increasing exponentially. So, like I said, you know, sixty-six percent of all the operations, an operation is either a takeoff or a landing. So, if you watch a little airplane go out and do a touch-and-go, that's two operations. And we're forty-three percent of the based aircraft are at the Bend Airport. And that's partly driven because the Redmond Airport services the commercial areas and that commercial traffic, but they are focusing more on general aviation, providing more services there, which we are glad, we welcome that, because some of the really large jets and stuff we have are probably better served in Redmond. And hopefully, we can pull away some of the smaller aircraft from, from what they're doing, and limits their capacity for the jets. So, any questions about that, or like I said, I apologize, it's a little hard to read, but...
I think that's, I think just one of the big pieces, you know, where we talk about it being the third busiest airport in Oregon, it is because of takeoffs and landings. And I know there's some sort of rolling of eyes, even from our counselors, about, well, that's because of the flight schools, it's not really activity coming in and out of the airport. But from a safety standpoint, it is, there are takeoffs and landings that are coming, that are happening at the Bend Airport, and so, when we think about some of the safety investments that the FAA will probably ask us to make in our next master plan, it really is getting at just this pure number of, of operations. The Central Oregon airspace is quite busy, and so, we have the Redmond Tower calling us at times, saying, "You've got a busy airport." And so, really thinking about all of this collectively, how do the airports work together, and how do we invest the right dollars and in the right facilities at, at all of our airports?
So, do you have any idea when this, when these numbers, when they're from?
These would be probably twenty-sixteen?
Sixteen, seventeen.
Sixteen numbers published in seventeen.
Oregon Department of Aviation did a report on all the airports, and they went to a new format where they're just gonna keep constantly updating it. So, I think they've got a newer update that's got a little bit newer numbers than what that is. But like significantly, like with Redmond, the operations, their Hillsborough Aviation came into Redmond, it's doing a lot of flight instruction. So, that's really bumping those numbers up, and so, that makes a difference. Also, the number of people they're moving is way beyond what we move. I mean, obviously, every airliner that takes off is quite a bit higher. And one of the things we're working at now, too, is airspace conflict. We've got a really busy airport in Redmond, a busy airport in Bend, and the approaches coming in, which are imaginary lines, you can't see them, but it's how the aircraft approach, we're working at trying to de-conflict that, and we're working with air traffic control, just discussing what we're seeing, what's going on, where the traffic's at. And so, and there's new technology coming out called ADS-B, and in a small aircraft, just a single-engine Cessna one-fifty trainer, you now have visual of all the traffic that's around you, and it's being mandated, January first, all aircraft within certain airspace has to have it. And that is making a big difference as far as awareness. So, you might hear more people going, "Oh, wow, it's so busy." Well, it is, but they're now seeing traffic that they never could've seen before, so there's that. So, there is a lot of adjustment, they added a new sector from air traffic control out of Seattle, just for Central Oregon, because of the busyness of it. So, we're seeing a lot of that kind of impact.
What is sector out of Seattle, I mean, I don't understand.
Okay, and I'm kind of a little bit of a novice at some of it, too, but each controller is given a geographical area, they say, "That's your piece of real estate, you watch the traffic." And as aircraft travel across the country, they hand it off from one sector controller to another, and it got so congested here that they had two control, two sectors, they said, "We just can't keep up with it all." So, they added a third sector, so that evidently brings in a third controller, or it takes it at a higher elevation. And we've actually seen pictures and stuff where it shows the targets of how busy they are. You know, the good news is, you know, they've got radar, and they're keeping track of it. But it is, it's straining the system all the way around, is keeping up with it, but that's, that's what growth does, so.
I was surprised in the, the Redmond Airport, when I went, I did a tour there and went up in the tower, that they didn't have, like, radar locating all these planes, it's like, seriously?
That is a big discussion that, that I think all of us would love for them to have radar in that tower.
Yeah, and then, you know, the Bend doesn't really have a tower, right?
There's no tower.
So, when would that, when do you expect that, I mean, I don't know, that's beyond...
Do you hold that question until we get to our master plan process?
Okay.
And what, I'm, we're gonna keep moving, I'm looking at the time behind your head, Gary, but, is that one of the reasons, so, at towered airports, those men and women who are in the tower are telling the flight instructors and the commercial pilots when to land and when to take off. When you don't have a tower, people are doing it by line of sight and on radio. So, non-towered airports, when they're busy like Bend, have the ability to almost have more operations than you could ever have in residence, because the tower may never let that amount, those amounts of things happen at one time.
Oh.
But our airspace isn't any different than any other infrastructure that we are grappling with in Central Oregon right now, and needing to invest in that infrastructure.
In fact, the next slide, yeah, real quick, and I'll, I'll jump this, 'cause I see, you know, our time's starting to get down, but, the comparisons between Redmond and Bend, and this isn't, we need, Redmond Airport is absolutely critical to the growth in Central Oregon, we need that commercial service. So, we're, we're two different types of airports that do two different, meet two different sets of needs. But just kind of roughly, you know, Redmond has a tower, Bend doesn't. They have aircraft rescue and firefighting, ours is, is, the closest facility is on Neff Road for the city fire park. They have two runways, we have one, they, we don't have commercials or air service. They have TSA security, we don't have any security. They have security fencing, we have a three-strand barbed wire fence. They have snow equipment, and the amount of snow removal equipment they have is astronomical, they can clear the runways in about twenty minutes. It takes us three or four hours. Their traffic count, as you can see, is quite a bit different, the based aircraft, there's a significant difference. They have a lot more land that they can develop eventually, and more protection from encroachment around them. And the revenues, they bring in about twelve million dollars, they have a passenger ticket tax, which helps fund what they do. We have the budget of whatever we bring in off of the leases and whatever we can convince the city of Bend to provide for subsidies. And then, the staffing, they have twenty-nine people working, and those numbers come off of their budget reports online. And then, our staffing, they have one full-time person as the airport manager, and then two half-time people, so. And this...
This is so hard to read, but...
Yeah, this is...
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
It's just showing that, so this comes from the same report with the number, but just showing, so that people can understand, is this looks at similar airports in Oregon and the total economic impact. And what's interesting about this is we're comparing airports with commercial service and just GA airports, and you can see that, at least in this report, they're estimating that the economic activity coming just from the Bend G Airport is significantly higher than what's coming from the Redmond Airport. And so, just understanding how the two types of air, they just work differently in the system, and we need to make sure that we're focusing energy as a region on all of our airports so that we get the greatest return. And part of that is, there's a whole bunch of differences in, in why those numbers are so drastically different, and that would be a memo that we could provide as follow-up, if you have...
Why is Clement Falls so high?
So, they have a military base?
Is that what it is? The, just the military base makes that difference?
Yep, and then, they also have a TSA, I mean, they have commercial flights out of the Clement Falls Airport.
Oh, they do? Gosh, I've never flown to Clement Falls.
Medford, which is really confusing for us.
I've flown to Medford, yeah, and Eugene, and all this other...
And then, has commercial flights, Salem, so, yeah.
Interesting. It makes a huge difference.
You wanna sit?
Oh, yeah, I can, well, I can do either.
I'm fine.
So, what we wanted to talk specifically was about the Bend Municipal Airport, and so, the Bend Municipal Airport is four hundred and twenty acres of city-owned property inside the county. You can see that we're surrounded on three sides, maybe we'll call it three and a half sides, by privately-held owned land, and then, on the north side, and a hair of the east side, surrounded by publicly-owned land. And so, when we think about the neighbors to the airport and the impact of neighbors, we're really, really aware of where and how our growth ought to be planned, so that we can reduce those impacts on residential uses, farming uses, and consider the publicly-owned land to the north as appropriate places for expansion. When you're at the airport, though, most of the west side of the airport is built out, and really, the opportunities for expansion are all on that east side of the airport. That's where we just built our helicopter operations area, so, one of the things that was identified in the last master plan is that this conflict between rotor wing and fixed-wing aircraft could and ought to be addressed. And the way they chose to address it, the FAA, is by building a helicopter-only facility, and that's the helicopter operations area in the northeast corner there. That is expecting to have, it's got about six acres available today for hangar development, and that will really allow us to move the helicopters over to that area of the airport and get them off the apron that's right in front of the FBO. When you come out for a visit, you'll see how everything is parked today, and then we'll get to be able to show you how everything ought to be parked. But the HOA is the only flight-certified helicopter operations area east of the Mississippi. And, yeah, so, we really have the one, only facility like that, that the FAA has built and then flight-certified. We have a history, I mean, this airport started in World War II, we're gonna show you some pictures, but we've had thirty million dollars of federal investment since nineteen ninety-nine, and we're gonna show you what some of those look like in the next slides. So, here's the airstrip, this is World War II, this is what things looked like, you can see the little planes, and, but we had a spot on the map way back when.
That sign was for the corporate CEO, Bend here.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
I don't know who that was, that wasn't even Chevlin Hickson yet, but it was someone. But in two thousand, this is where you see the development on the west side, you can see runway one-six-three-four, we've talked about that before, that is the runway at Bend, it's five thousand feet, but this is before we even had real significant taxiways, and, but once we get to two thousand and four, you can see that we built Taxiway A, which is the one that's, it looks like it's south on your slide, but it's west. And you start to see some of the manufacturing development.
This is my helicopter trip out there.
All right. By two thousand and nine, we had moved the runway further away from Taxiway A, and this is where you're probably familiar with that aero development. I know, 'cause I wrote the traffic study for this development back in two thousand and seven or eight, contemplating massive, or just a significant investment in hangars for all different types of aviation activity on that east side of the airport. You can see here that we built Taxiway B, we rehabbed Taxiway A, you can see all that brand-new asphalt, and then, you can see the new striping on runway one-six-three-four, and then...
It's all been done in how many years?
In the last, last ten years.
Ten years, yeah. So, you put in a lot.
A lot, the FAA has, we'll take, we'll really give them credit. And then, this is what the airport looks like today with that helicopter operations area. One of the things that the FAA won't, really doesn't want your airport to be a cut-through from one road, one county road to the other, and so, we have access off Nelson Road on the south side of the airport, which is on the left side of your screen, and then, we built a new access road to McGrath Road on the north side of the airport so that we could have good access to that helicopter operations area. So, you can see that L along the, the west and then south side of the helicopter operations area, that's where the hangars are contemplated for development, to move the offices and the briefing rooms and the facilities related to those, that helicopter training, over to the east side of the airport.
So, what's the L yours, I don't see the L.
Can you, so, on the upper-left corner, you can see the striping where the helicopter, the white, there's three pads, and then there, so, if you, it's sort of like the backwards L along the top there, and then...
Above the, yeah, okay.
Sorry.
And what's gonna go on there?
Those are the hangars that, go ahead.
Go ahead, I was hoping the cursor would...
Oh, sorry.
There we go. There we go.
Thank you.
So, you're talking about that L there, there's gonna be hangars there for...
That's where the hangars are contemplated, so that what we committed to the FAA as a community is that, once they invested the millions of dollars in this asphalt, that we would move the helicopters over there, and all of the aviation-related uses that need to be on a helicopter pad adjacent to that, that facility.
I might add just one more thing, too, and down in the lower, in this area, that was rebuilt at the same time as the helicopter area and reconfigured back to fixed wing. We'd been using it for helicopters, so it's reconfigured to fixed wing, and it was part of the helicopter project, so.
So, where are we today? So, we have an adopted two thousand and thirteen master plan, I'm gonna pardon, I'm gonna, forgive me for your eyes right now, but this is what was contemplated in that master plan, the yellow is the area that this master plan thought that we would have, the city of Bend, as the airport sponsor, would have to acquire to accommodate the growth that was needed, then recognized in the two thousand and thirteen master plan, which included a thousand-foot extension of the runway. So, we would go from five thousand feet to six thousand feet, I keep looking at Gary, I'm gonna get these numbers right eventually. And, and then also be able to support the, protect the investment in the helicopter operations area with some acquired property on that northeast side, and then, the runway extension required some acquisition on the south part of the airport. So, in two thousand and seventeen, so, just two years ago, because of the drastic increase in activity at the Bend Municipal Airport, FAA said, "Your two thousand and thirteen master plan isn't gonna cut it. You're contemplating a runway extension, we are not ready to invest in that runway extension until we get some current numbers." The FAA funded that master plan this year, and the master plan is underway. That master plan is not like a public facility plan that we contemplate here in Oregon. This is a federal document that only cares about federal rules, they don't care if we have Oregon land use law, they don't care if neighbors adjacent to the airport don't like it. Their job is to make sure, we talked about in the beginning, the role of the airport, emergency response, access for aviation, that highway in the sky. So, they're asking us to go ahead and put forward a master plan that will accommodate the twenty years of development that's expected at the Bend Airport. They care about safety paramount, they care about access for operations. So, what are your current operations, are there sufficient runway capacities there to do that? Then, they start caring about other things that the rest of us might care about in the community, so, what are the types of uses, what are the adjacent uses, those types of things. But really, they, the FAA fully expects that their master plan will be taken full cloth and embraced by the community with open arms.
So, and the FAA is federal agency, but there's a lot of dollars associated with that, so that's why it's, it's a high priority to follow the rules, 'cause that's where dollars can come from.
Yep, so for this master plan, it's five hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and sixty thousand of it is coming from the feds, another hundred thousand's coming from the state, and then about forty thousand, if I did my math right, is coming from the city of Bend.
Yeah, so just understanding that scenario, when the FAA isn't just this entity, it's the funding entity that can usually be a big part of this, yeah?
Yes. And this is where we come into, so when we think about this as the airport sponsor, we are obligated, nothing is approved until the FAA approves the, approves the master plan. So as a city, it's not like, it doesn't go through a typical land use process. It is the FAA master plan. The FAA has approved it and we adopt that by resolution. So this is not, we don't have public, we as a city don't hold public hearings. Now, the FAA master planning process does. As Commissioner DeBonne referenced earlier, we're having a whole series of public meetings associated with that master plan, which are required by the federal government. So they can follow their rules around NEPA and environmental assessment and all of their public planning rules. So we right now with the master plan have basically done our existing conditions analysis. So we've said, these are the hangars, this is the condition of the taxiway, and this is the existing aviation activity. The FAA is now, right now reviewing our existing aviation activity. We can't do anything else until that's approved. We have a sense that we're going to have a longer runway extension than we thought we have in the last plan. We have a sense that there will be a second runway. We know that a control tower is on the table. So there are definitely going to be elements in this adopted master plan that weren't in the 2013 adopted master plan, but the first hurdle that we have to get through with the FAA is the existing aviation activity.
So you mentioned adding a thousand feet was part of the 13 plan?
Mm-hmm.
And there may be a proposal for longer now, you're saying?
Yep.
And is there like magic numbers here where, you know, when you're flying an airplane, you know that it's either five, six, or what's the next?
They, they're basing it on the, the largest aircraft that's expected to use it on a consistent basis and then the, they call it accelerate stop distance to be able to accelerate up to takeoff speed and then something happens and they can stop is kind of what drives that. And then also just the basic takeoff length that they have for altitude, that they have enough runway to get off the ground. And we're currently, for the really large aircraft that's constrained, they have to offload fuel and stuff to do it.
Yeah, elevation in summertime, heat conditions probably define some of that also. Okay.
And it can lead to longer runways.
Yeah.
Lighter runways, thicker runways, all of those things go into it. One thing that we did want to talk about a little bit just here is that we actually have quite a bit of room for new development at the airport today. We've been working really closely with Nick and his staff to make it a clearer process for those who would like to build hangars on the Bend Municipal Airport today. So we have some current planning work that we've been doing. It's going really well. So I really appreciate the efforts of the community development department. So in terms of what's going to happen in the next 12 months, I think we have a road, a path for hangar development or businesses that want to come in that will be cleared up this fall. And then when we talk about the longer process, how do we want to adopt the master plan as a land use document? This is where you all have a role. So the city of Bend doesn't have a land use role, but the way that we're currently organized, the county has a land use role.
Eric, you had a question?
Yeah, just a quick question on the airport extension. Would that require relocation of the Palabute Highway?
The current one, yeah. So the one that's contemplated in the plan, adopted in the plan today assumes relocation of the Palabute Highway. The feds don't care.
Right.
What, a local road?
Yeah. What's in the way? And, but that's all federally funded. Those are all federally funded capital investments. So what we think will happen is if our existing aviation activity forecasts are approved by the FAA, then it would be an even longer runway, but largely contemplated in the same place. So just going further, further than the current one.
And who's the building official in community development? Is that Deschutes County or Bend?
With the airport, it's Deschutes County.
So any hangar that goes up is a Deschutes County community development-
That's right.
...application process? So I guess, I mean, I kind of knew that, but I wasn't sure now, I was just thinking it through, so.
Yeah, our, our building team is well versed in hangar development. We're very closely.
But then if you want to connect to sewer, you've got to get a city of Bend plumbing permit and then a Deschutes County building permit. It's, we've made this, people who want to build at the Bend Airport have to really want it. They're going to get through this process.
Is there opportunity for city of Bend to be the building official out there or is that, has that ever come up?
Well, if, if the county were interested in transferring jurisdiction, but otherwise it's under county jurisdiction.
So we could do, there's some agreements that we could put in place if that was-
Yeah. Something to discuss, I guess, I don't know. All right.
So we talked a little bit about the federal aviation and how they really don't care about any of our local rules and that they're the ones largely funding everything. Now, we have an amazing director in Seattle and we have a great Department of Aviation. They understand that there are processes to go through. They would love us, for us to figure that out at the local level without having to get involved. I've talked a little bit about the city of Bend as sponsor and then you started asking questions about the role of the county. And this is where I think Tom was alluding to as we go forward, is that once the master plan is approved by the FAA and adopted by resolution by the city of Bend, then we come to you for land use adoption. We have some comprehensive plan work. Nick and Peter are going to jump in when the economic development director doesn't get this totally right, but largely we're talking about comprehensive plan, making sure that the language for those comp plan designations are as modern as they can be and as forward looking as they can be so that we're not holding our airport to some historic belief that we had long ago, really making sure we're, we're modernizing that language. We have to talk about how do we protect the land adjacent to the airport so we can provide certainty for the residential uses and then also certainty to protect those runway uses. Homes and farms right next to runways are compatible in some places, but with as busy as this airport, probably not in the long term. We need to think about the airport layout plan. So the airport layout plan is that one I showed you that contemplates what land needs to be acquired, as Eric picked up, where the new runway will go, so that we have a sense of where the land needs to be protected. Right now, that's adopted as part of your transportation system plan, so it's a part of your comprehensive plan. And then the low, the sort of the lowest level or the nearest to us level is the development code. And so making sure that all of the language we have adopted in the development code after the new master plan really contemplates all of the uses in the right places that the comp plan and the airport layout plan identify, adopt, approve. My planning school is coming from nowhere. So what we imagined was we really wanted to have both county staff and elected officials involved in our master planning process for education, for the education. So you would really understand why the runway extension-
So when you use the word master planning process, you're referring to FAA master planning process? So I mean, that may be important because, yeah, you, you can envision all kinds of things when you say, oh, we're going to do the master plan. What does that mean?
Not a public-
So the FAA federal airport master plan.
Yep. Really just so that the commissioners would have some sense of the trade offs that were made during that plan, the public involvement that did take place during that plan, the number of neighbors who were engaged both by Gary, myself, by our consultant staff in understanding the needs, the trade offs that, I mean, I talked about trade offs before, but really those emergency response and access trade offs that the plan considered. And then help guide us through what is the right approval process for this commission. There are lots of ways that you can make decisions to make changes to your comprehensive plan. And as a single property owner, making an application to you, those, you have some choices. And we would love to know what your comfort level is doing that. And that's when Dave is starting to laugh.
I just sent Nick an email.
[laughing]
Asking that very issue is-
Oh, good.
This is, I assume this is going to be processed, the county piece is a legislative, otherwise it would be difficult to have the decision makers on a quasi judicial matter getting involved on this earlier piece. So have we thought this through?
Yeah, exactly. So going back to what Tom's initial comments, where we were thinking about kind of a three step dance or a three step process here. First is to have the overview today, which has been excellent. Then we were talking about having a tour with the commissioners. This all before any application is submitted, of course. And then the third piece would be asking the board how they want to process the application, quasi judicial, which is how we've done it in the past. But legislative is also, we believe, an option. And we've always thought that's, that's a possibility because there are multiple properties involved, particularly as the master plan expands to even, even more properties and it provides a lot more discussion with the board and participation and involvement by the board, kind of from the start throughout the entire process.
Yeah, my, my feeling is that the legislative is better, you know, when we did the west side transect, they wanted to do it as judicial because they didn't want us to mess with it. They wanted it to be exactly what they wanted it to be. But if you're really wanting input, it's much better for commissioners, I think, to, to be involved, be able to talk to people about what they think as opposed to being the role of a judge and-
I think that there is-
All these prohibitions about communications and, I mean, because you really can't idea, you know, brainstorm anything as a-
I think one of the pieces that I want to be very careful of, and that's why we're here talking now, is that I talked a little bit about the federal aviation role and the public involvement process that's happening as we put the federal aviation require plan together. So once the plan is done, I want to be as clear as we can be with particularly the neighbors adjacent to the airport, that their time for input was during the FAA master planning, not in your legislative process. Because you don't necess, well, I know you're nodding and this is the tough, really tough part about being in Oregon with-
I'm nodding because that's not what they're going to expect and-
Exactly.
It won't even occur to them to be involved during the FFA.
So that's, so I want your help and how do we get to the right people? Who are you getting emails from about the airport that we can go talk to now?
There, first, there aren't any right people. It's just whoever show, you know, we don't control any of that, you know? That's the thing about this and-
You won't have a, your ability to legislate that airport layout plan will be minimal. And your ability as a commission to legislate, I might be using the word improperly, so jump on me, please. Your ability to legislate the uses that are needed to accommodate that aviation growth will be limited because they already have been decided in the federal plan. And so we can have several, we can have a lot of conversations about that so that we're really clear on how that works. Because we couldn't, as airport sponsor, move forward with a master plan that then gets chunks taken out of it by the county as the land use authority. We couldn't say that aviation supported uses includes this whole list of industries, but in Deschutes County, we're not going to allow one. Or in Deschutes County, we're going to somehow limit those. Because we would not be in compliance then with our promise to the federal government and our grant assurances. So we are happy to have as many conversations with you ahead of time so that we're clear on that. So because I want to be clear with the neighbors. I want to be clear with the community about what we, what, I talked about, our job is to make decisions for neighbors on their worst day before they even know that it's coming. And that's part of what happens with this plan, is making sure that we're building out an airport that meets a federally designated use in a way that meets our community needs as best.
You know, for me then, I think we have to think about this a little bit because I, if we're not really going to be legislating it, then there's no reason to, I'm kind of inclined to think that, well, then there's no reason to set it up like we are. You don't pretend we're going to be involved when we're really not if everything's already been decided. And I, again, I go back to the transect. I was, it was really clear that this thing had been pushed through the city and you guys had all signed off on everything and we were just there to approve it. And we did, you know, and I, I challenged some things, we added some things, we made some differences in a judicial way, but we didn't have that much effect. It was just really an up or down vote and that sounds like really what we'd be doing here. So if, if all you really want is up or down vote, I guess maybe then I'd reverse, I'd go back to quasi judicial because I was thinking if, if you really want legislative, it's better to have legislative, but you see what I'm saying?
Well, so we're here, yeah, we're here to lay it out and work it through. So, because I'm not real clear, you know, what's going to be the value here and the, the media's following, you know, I was on the radio, you were on the TV, the last 24 hours. So, yeah, this is it. We're laying it out and this is the struggle.
You know, we could give it some study because this is somewhat new. There might be a process to run them concurrently. You don't have a time issue with a legislative local process, so we wouldn't get into any time issues. The commissioners could have much more of a hands-on involvement. I recognize the federal aviation folks are going to put some, some real governor on how far a field they can go, but nevertheless, that might be an option. We can explore whether that's legally feasible. I, I don't know, this is kind of new ground.
One idea that's coming to my mind, listen, thank you so much. I really appreciate your comments. It's helped me think through this. One of the things that we've thought about is historically, the comp plan designation for airports has just been the airport property. And maybe one thing we do is we go larger than that, so we really do have some better protections for the residential uses that are adjacent to airports, so everyone can have more certainty over the next 20 years. So rather than just thinking about the airport and the airport layout plan as this piece in Deschutes County, think about some of the, and that's where the county would have much more legislative impact, not just on the airport layout plan, but how you want to envision that land use development adjacent to the airport over time.
There you go. And that ends up being kind of a larger overlay view of the-
And that's where you would, Commissioner Henderson, you would have more authority to decide what happens right outside that airport boundary.
Yeah. Interesting. Thoughts, Commissioner?
Actually, I know some people that have businesses there. So they are thrilled with what's going on and they conveyed that to me. So, you know, it is amazing how busy, I've never been to the Bend Airport. I only go to Redmond. Yes, yes. So no, I think, you know, it's an incredible opportunity and I do think you want to do it right and I'm glad the FAA is involved in, you know, link cleaning and it sounds like you could use more than three strands of barbed wire maybe around it and, you know-
Let's just keep the large animals out at this point.
Yeah, well, large, small, whatever. Anyway, so it's, it's great to hear this today and know that, I know the economic activity is incredible that's going on there now. So if we can just channel it in the right direction.
So what we'd like to do is, I'll let you guys talk internally about some options for sure, and I don't mean led, that's not the right word. And then we will schedule some time either with you as a body or individually to come out and meet some of the businesses. We'd love for you to tour the AirLink hangar so you can really understand what their business is. Come out and you can walk on the asphalt of that new helicopter operation there.
You have AirLink, but then there's the other flight one. So there are actually what, two in, that work out of Deschutes County?
Yeah, that Lifeflight, actually, we have multiple air ambulance services that do come in.
You do?
AirLink is based there, but I think Lifeflight's out of Redmond.
Right.
There's other services that come from all over the country, sometimes just patient transport, but that's usually the, the transfer area.
Okay.
And look, we'd love for you to see the Epic manufacturing facility.
Well, maybe we could schedule a time to come out and do that.
Yeah.
And then get back-
No, we should.
And then let, I'll let you tell us when you want to come back, when us to come back to talk about how we want to run, what are some options for the adoption process.
That sounds great. And one of the things-
Is the FAA, excuse me, I was just going to ask, is the FAA planning process already underway? So that would be something, maybe we could, you know, find out where it is.
We have, so both Counselor DeBonne and then Tony, Peter and Nick have been involved in understanding where we are with that process. We're just in the existing conditions. So we have a little ways to go. We've had two or three public meetings and our next one is scheduled in November pending FAA approval of our forecast.
And I was invited to be involved, but then I was in this spot where I didn't know if we should. So we were getting, you know, different guidance. So that's why I haven't attended meetings, but I was invited. So this is why, one of the things-
From my point of view, it's very safe for you to attend meetings. What you would have to just declare is that you participated in-
Well, yeah, as I say, I mean-
So, but I'm not your legal counsel.
Well, and it was just guidance and we're not, and so I, so I've stood back a little bit.
Well, good. I think we, we need to move on to our next item. Is there other thing, have we finished the slides or? We really appreciate you coming in and getting us started thinking as a group about it. I know our team will get us more up to speed and we'll get back to you.
Thanks so much.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Fabulous opportunity.
Enjoy your retirement.
Yes.
Gary, hopefully Gary will be back.
Yeah, Gary, you can come in as a special consultant.
There we go.
We might buy you lunch, but not much more.
Yeah.
All right, we'll move on to item number 15. Eric, I think this is you.
Uh, yes. Staff is ready to kick off the 2019, 20, 2020 process for arts and culture grant program. And so we, we just wanted to check in with the board to see if the board would like any changes to the grant application. As background, these funds come from Video Lottery, Video Lottery Fund. And last spring, the board prioritized the spending of the Video Lottery dollars and set aside $20,000 for this arts and culture grant program. Last fiscal year, there was $30,000 set aside for this program. Last year, the program funded a total of 16 projects that are contained in the packet and the projects ranged from a low of $1,000 to a high, or at least the request, a high of $10,000. In terms of the goals of the program, currently it's to increase arts and culture opportunities in Deschutes County. The second goal is to make arts and culture education available to Deschutes County residents and to the extent they contribute to the local economy. The grant application asks nonprofits to identify the target population, identify the geographic areas, the numbers of people that will be served, also how the program or the proposed initiative will impact the community and complement existing services. And finally, there's a, a question on the application about how the Deschutes County funds will, will be leveraged from other funding sources. funds will, will be leveraged from other funding sources. We typically have about a month where the application process is open, and then staff collects the applications and reviews them with the Board of Commissioners in a public meeting for determination. So we are ready to get started on the program, but just wanted to give the board an opportunity. If they wanted to change anything, now is the time.
Okay, Eric, it says that we are allocating $20,000, and yet you have this award listed as totaling $31,000?
Yes, the, the, the $31,000 was last year. Last year, the board allocated $30,000 for this grant program, and then decided instead of $30,000 to spend $31,000.
So these are FY numbers, that's why...
Yeah, 30...
We're adding 20 now.
So you're talking 20's numbers?
Yeah, yeah. For this current fiscal year, the board allocated $20,000 for the program. You'll recall that the board also set aside some additional Video Lottery funds for forest fuels reduction and affordable housing. So part of those funds were...
What was the request then for this year's amounts?
This is before that process.
This is before the process. We wanted to check in with the board. Before we kick off the application process, we wanted to check in and see if the board wanted any, any changes to the program.
Oh, like definition of what we want, yeah, just...
Yes, priorities, you know, the, I mean, we proposed to kind of have the same process, but if the board wanted to make any changes to the criteria or anything, before we kick off the process, we wanted to check in with the board. From here, what we'll do is we'll have about a month application period, and then we'll bring back the applications that we received to the board for consideration.
This is the first time since I've been here that we've even thought about that, in terms of what should they, what questions do they answer on their application, what are we looking for, and so that's interesting.
And Judith would have brought this to us in some form. So I think we have done this, it's just...
I thought you just brought in the, I thought, in the past, all I remember is getting the applications and looking at them.
Yeah, I don't think we've reviewed all the, all the pieces of it, but I just thought it'd be a good opportunity in case the board wanted to change the criteria. Because once the applications come in, if, if there was comment, it'd be too late.
Really be, is there something that we've, in the past, when we were going through it, struggled with, or...
Or we wish we would have...
Changed, or, let's see, we always ask about what we gave them last year, that's always a big, and then how's this fit in?
The other thing, in the past, we have not put a dollar limit on the application itself, although, you know, the, the awards tend to be in the couple thousand dollar range.
I guess one kind of pops out at me just looking through this, I haven't spent any time, but there's nothing really says why it's an arts and culture, you know, grant applica, what makes it arts and culture? What do they, we're always left trying to figure that out, you know, the, looking back at some of these, it's like, well, what do they actually do? Like Scalehouse, I remember that one last year came up, and we're like, what is that? What do they do? And... So I don't know if that's one of the broad questions we ask them or not, but...
You mean, how, how does it fit into?
An arts and culture grant program?
Yeah, okay.
You know, what makes it a, I just, some of these new ones, there's been a number that we, we don't know what, they're new to us. There's somebody's organized them this year or last year, and we...
Well, the fact that we're only allocating $20,000, you're saying we can pull money from somewhere else to make it more?
Well, if the board wanted to. I mean, last spring, the board decided to allocate $20,000 rather than 30, and the, part of those, the funds that, the $10,000 went to the one-time projects that Ed Keith will work with the board on.
Right.
In terms of fuels reduction. So that's why the program is, has less...
But, but in answer to your question, there may be some more money that we could, we, we have some that's called undesignated or something, right, as well, don't we?
Yeah, what tends to happen is sometimes the Video, Video Lottery proceeds come in higher than budgeted, or the board can transfer general fund into the Video Lottery, I mean, if the board wanted to spend more than $20,000 on this program.
And last year, it was a $30,000 fund, which we ended up funding at $31,000, just because that's how it hung together in the end.
I don't know, you might say applications with a $5,000 max, because we're actually doing less money. And you didn't do anything at $5,000 in '19. So you did some five, you did, you know, yeah, it looks like $5,000 has been your max.
Sure, yeah, we can add that. I think that's good.
I mean, it might just be good clarifying to them if they're thinking that they're going to get $10,000 from the company.
Sure, we can add that. I think that's good clarification and expectation setting.
And then I, I would always, I would love to be able to fund $5,000 a few times, as in, it's a shame when we get 20 applications and we give everybody $1,000, because then they just get a little bit of what they want to do, which is helpful, $1,000, but, you know, kind of getting to a, a more impactful effort by some of these organizations is going to be funding it more fully. So I don't know if we want to put words around, you know, one or two committed $5,000.
But can't these people make applications to our own personal funds?
Yes, they can also apply through the discretionary grant program as well.
So you, maybe you should make note of that somewhere, that...
Sure, we could mention that, other opportunities.
Yeah, you can just leave it at $5,000 max application, and then it's just a willingness to try to fund somebody larger than $1,000 or two, and doing it 10 times is, is my point of view.
Right, well, we had 16 applicants last year.
Yeah.
So we have 16, yes.
Well, maybe, yeah, before we look at these, maybe you can see where we are in the lottery funds and stuff.
Sure.
Okay, well, good. That's good to think about that in terms of...
Thank you for giving us a head in advance.
Yeah, that's good.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
Me, too.
You're welcome. Well...
It was just confusing to me.
Well, I don't think we've done this before this way.
Before the, we, we used to just get...
Yeah, so it's...
It's not kind of nice to think about it.
Yep. All right, thank you for your input. We'll make those changes, and we'll open the application process and get a press release out.
Okay.
And then in about a month and a half or two months, we'll come back before the board with the applications.
Thank you, Eric.
Hey, thanks, Eric. All right, so we're there for lunch recess. Did a nice job timewise, five to 12. So we do have people coming back for item number 16. Have you heard from Mr. Polish as well? Okay, so that'll be a discussion. Tom, I also want to, and I think maybe Commissioner Derek DeBoeck will too, but would like to have Lee come back to discuss the, the Courtney Building project again. I got a chance to go there and look at it yesterday, so, so that may be another item after the first, after item 16.
Would you also like to see if the engineer is available or just Lee?
I think just Lee, and if, yeah, maybe he can have his budget.
The mechanical engineer from SunWest? Is it SunWest?
No, it's not, no, they're not the, they're the project, the project manager was there yesterday when I was there, and he doesn't, he wouldn't be the one that we'd want the details from. It'd be a, it'd probably be a mechanical engineer if we need it, but maybe it's just Lee, just as, I mean, I, I don't think he needs an army to, I want to talk about some specific problems.
Sure, sure. Just wanted to check if, in case we wanted to get the engineer back.
Yeah.
My thought, I mean, if notification goes out to the project manager engineer person you're referring to, I wouldn't mind having him in the room, because, I mean, we don't want to hear from him, but I mean, if they're going to be involved and they're available.
Well, I want to ask questions specific to Lee that may influence the relationship with the project manager. I guess is my only, he's our employee, so I guess I felt like talking about the scope of the work and the cost of the work and, and, because it's our money, and the project manager is less useful to that.
Well, I mean, it's just, it's a public meeting. I was just thinking notification, if we're going to be discussing it, maybe opportunity just for that person to hear, is my thought process.
Is the meeting over yet?
So we'll recess for now.
When are we going to reconvene?
We want to reconvene at 12:30 or at 1?
But Nick said that Dennis had talked to you before, that he would be here at 1, if that was your...
Yeah, that'd be good.
He would be maybe, that's probably be here at 1.
Yeah, there's no rush for today. We're halfway through.
Are you all able to be here at 1?
1 o'clock.
Okay, I think, okay. So let's plan on that at 1 o'clock. Reconvening upstairs, yeah. So I think we're going to adjourn our recess now to convene later at 1 o'clock upstairs in the Allen Room.